Good afternoon and welcome to the Monday, May 9, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the State's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 5, 2022, to the Hillsborough, Beacon and Courier News. Who could please take a roll?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning-Beter?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here.
Ms. Treheo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here. We have a quorum. And just for clarification, Mr. Rue was sworn in around 5:30 today, correct?
Yes, it's 5:30.
So he has officially been sworn in and he is at the dais. So for next piece, I will now accept the motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive. Thank you.
Yes.
Apologies. To make it legal, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from the portion of that meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: One, the matters to be discussed on negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association; personnel matters, including a recommendation for the Director of Buildings and Grounds; professional services to conduct interviews of law firms; and a review of vendors for superintendent search; and two, the matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'll do that again, a motion and second, knowing now what we're discussing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Welcome back to the Monday, May 9, 2022 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. We are back from executive session and we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed. And we will move on to committee reports, and we have two really quick items. We'll start with Mr. Kidd.
We just, in an email, voted and approved to recommend to the board the last of the four summary reading choice books.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kidd. And Mr. Oliver, a quick HR update?
Yeah, HR committee met to review a personnel matter, and we have a agenda item for tonight to appoint and fill a vacancy.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions in the board of committee reports? No? Okay, great. All right, we will now move on to the Board President's report. And there's two items on my report for this week. The first one is we'd like to welcome Mr. Rue, who's been sworn in, as of today. And much less important, just kidding, we are going to, I'm going to read a proclamation. Hillsborough Township Board of Education, May 9, 2022, whereas the Hillsborough Township Public Schools has been fortunate to have Mr. Gregory Gillette as a dedicated board member for 15 years, whereas Mr. Gillette has served as President and Vice President of the Board of Education, and whereas Mr. Gillette has served as Chairperson on committees of the Board of Education, and whereas Mr. Gillette has served as a committee member on committees of the Board of Education, whereas the Board wishes to thank Mr. Gillette for his dedicated service to the Hillsborough community, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Hillsborough Board of Education and Hillsborough Township Public Schools recognize and appreciate Mr. Gillette's 15 years of service on the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Gillette.
Thank you. Totally unexpected, although I do probably tell people how long I've been on here, probably every other meeting, if not every meeting. So not totally unexpected, but thank you very much, I really appreciate it. And I'm going to say something more, like, I think, next month. But for tonight, to say, boy, this has really changed in 15 years, but I'm glad I've been here to experience the changes as they are. But thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to open up to the board if they wanted to say anything about Mr. Gillette. I'll see if anybody has any comments.
No, please. So I was going to say something nice about Greg, but that silence you're hearing, no, I'm teasing. Mr. President, I'd like to take just a 10-minute recess, just to let everybody celebrate and have a little bit of cake. Major milestone for Mr. Gillette, the residents of this town, thank you. I know how hard it is. It's a very thankless job, and I think the school district is a better place because of your hard work, so I want to thank you. But I'd like everyone to just take a 10-minute recess.
And before we do that, we'll let everybody make their comments and embarrass them if need be? I don't know if anybody else wants to make any comments?
We need his wife here to embarrass him, so.
Anybody else want to?
I appreciate Mr. Gillette for making sure our executive sessions fulfill their full time.
Sorry about that. And listen, this is my second year on the board, and I didn't know what to think of this guy when I first joined, but always well thought out, thinks through his opinions and everything, and I respect the hell out of you, so I really appreciate your time on the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Treheo?
So I didn't have anything prepared to speak about Mr. Gillette, so I just wanted to thank him. He was board president on my first year on the board in 2017, which I appreciated learning from him. He allowed me to go to school boards delegate assembly, so I appreciated that. And when I had asked to participate on some committees, when there was a vacancy, he allowed that, so he was very generous with that, so I appreciate that. And also just learning from him on Operations Committee, which was one of the committees that I really enjoyed being on, and learning from him about finance, so I appreciate that. And on Thursday, actually, Somerset County will be having School Boards Association meeting where we will be recognizing Mr. Gillette for his 15 years on the district, so if anybody's able to make it, please join me.
Awesome. All right, and we're going to take a quick five-minute recess to have some cupcakes, because very exciting stuff, and if you want, you can just throw them at Mr. Gillette. But we'll come back in.
Is that for you?
Yeah, a cupcake.
I'll take a cupcake.
All right, so we'll come back in five minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back in five.
This table shows the percentage of students by student group for the past three school years. Enrollment data reflects enrollment reported at the end of the school year and only includes students attending the school. Students that attend programs outside of the district are not included in enrollment counts and percentages. In the 2020-2021 school year, data reflects that students disenrolled to be homeschooled during the pandemic. These graphs are supposed to illustrate trends. In student growth over the last three years, student growth is measured by median student growth percentile. The table is supposed to show us how student growth over the last three years compared to the statewide median. Due to the fact that we didn't have 2020 and 2021 data, student growth percentiles were not calculated, so the only data point we have left is the 18-19 data. These graphs are supposed to show trends in the proficiency rate for federal accountability over the last three years and shows the percentage of students that met or exceeded expectations on assessments. The expectation is that a minimum of 95% of the students participate, but again, due to cancellation of the assessments in both 2020 and 2021, there is no data except for the 18-19 data. Lincoln Benchmark Assessments were given in 2020-2021 to help measure and support student learning. Three benchmarks were administered over the year and growth was calculated at the end of the year. Global benchmark information was used to adjust pacing in ELA and math as well as for discussion surrounding learning acceleration this year. Individual student benchmark information was used to identify students in need of additional support, such as response to intervention services and wraparound services being offered with the use of ESER funding this year. Graduation rates are calculated using the adjusted cohort graduation rate calculation, which all states are required to use. A student is counted as a graduate in a given school year if they earn a state-endorsed diploma by August 31st. A state-endorsed diploma is awarded to students who meet both course requirements and graduation assessment requirements. Governor Phil Murphy signed Executive Order 214 on January 11, 2021, which waived the graduation assessment requirement for any 12th grade student who had not yet met the graduation assessment requirements but had met all the credit, curriculum, and attendance requirements for graduation. These graphs show four- and five-year adjusted cohort graduation rates for the most recent three cohorts of students. These charts and tables are based on the state graduation rate, which reflects all students who receive a state-endorsed diploma. The table shows our student graduation rate is higher than the statewide graduation This table shows the federal version of the 2021 four-year and 2020 five-year graduation rates. Beginning in 2021, the New Jersey Department of Ed was required by the United States Department of Ed Federal Performance Review Report to make changes to graduation rate calculations used for federal reporting and accountability. For 2021 students with disabilities whose IP includes a modification or exemption from meeting either the state course requirements and/or attendance requirements for graduation were not included in the graduates count when calculating the federal version of the adjusted cohort rate. It's important to note that these changes are changes only in how graduation rates are calculated for federal reporting and accountability and not how diplomas are actually This table shows the percentage of cohort 2021 graduates who met the high school graduation assessment requirements through each type of graduation pathway for both English language arts and math. The goal is for as many students as possible to meet the graduation requirements using the statewide assessments. This table shows that we are indeed above the state percentage for students successfully meeting the graduation requirements using the statewide assessment and below the state percentage for the alternative assessment pathways, which is where we want to be. Important to note, according to the Executive Order 2014, which waived the graduation assessment requirements for the 12th grade students who had met all but the graduation assessment requirements, on this table, there is now a requirement waived under Executive Order 214 to account for these students. Student absences provide information about a school's culture and climate, and research shows that absences impact a student's ability to succeed in school. Chronic absenteeism is defined as being absent for 10% or more days enrolled during the school year. A student who is not present for any reason, whether excused, unexcused, or for disciplinary action, is considered absent unless permitted by state statute or regulations. Due to a federal waiver, the Department of Ed did not report chronic absenteeism in the 1920 reports, but this data was added back in the 2021 reports. This graph shows the percentage of students by grade level who are chronically absent during the school year. It's important to note for 2021, because the number of days that students spent in-person in remote learning environments during the school year differed, the state-level comparisons are not included on this graph. Teacher diversity improves outcome for all students. This table and graph both show that there is greater student diversity in classrooms than teacher diversity in schools across the state. This table and graph both show that there is greater student diversity in our classrooms than teacher diversity in our schools. We are continuing our efforts to increase the diversity of our teaching force. The College and Career Readiness Table shows the percentage of our students compared to the state who followed various college and career readiness indicators. We have a greater percentage of students taking the SAT, ACT, and AP courses than the state, and in 2020, we had a lower percentage of students enrolled in dual enrollment than the state. But over the last several years, we have increased the number of courses and students who participate in our dual enrollment courses. The SEAL by Literacy identifies graduating high school students who are able to demonstrate proficiency in English in addition to one or more languages. The College and Career Readiness Section includes participation in visual and performing arts coursework for students in grades 6 through 12. In grades 6 through 8, students cycle through related arts, and in the high school, these courses become electives. We do not have a dance or drama program at the middle or the high school levels. This table shows the number of incidents reported by type. The last row shows the rate of incidents for every 100 students enrolled. A single incident may be counted under multiple incident types. The total unique incidents row provides an unduplicated count of incidents. To provide for student safety, the building is secured throughout the day. Visitors, when allowed, must sign in upon entry and will be stopped at various points throughout the building to check for visitors' passes. Students and staff are trained annually on the standard response protocol for lockouts, lockdowns, evacuations, and shelter-in-place scenarios. Drills in these areas, as well as fire drills, are conducted monthly, and the entire school population plays an active role in preserving the safety of the school community. This table shows the number of students in full day and half-day pre-K and kindergarten programs for the past three school years. As you know, we have half-day programs in Hillsborough. Our full-day programs are found in our Title I schools as service to our most at-risk students for early intervention. COVID-19 has impacted enrollment due to some parents disenrolling their child from public This table shows ratios of students and staff members in the district compared to the state. Numbers in green indicate we have a better ratio than the state, and numbers in red indicate we have a worse ratio than the state. The data indicate that we have fewer administrators, nurses, and child study team members compared to the state. Child study team members include school psychologists, school social workers, and learning disabilities teacher consultants. The ratio for the child study team compares students with disabilities instead of all This table shows the percentage of 2020 high school graduates enrolled in post-secondary institutions by the fall of 2021. In the racial groups with a large enough sample size, a greater percentage of Hillsborough students enroll in colleges and universities than students across the state. The National Student Clearinghouse has reported declines in undergraduate enrollment as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. As a result, caution should be used in comparing this year's results to prior or future years. And here are some additional resources if you would like further information. And then I just have a couple of things to say. I need a sip of water, I'm sorry. All right. So now on to some of the celebratory things that have happened across the district. At the Hillsborough Middle School, I am proud to recognize nine of our middle school students who were nominated for this year's Paul Robeson Youth Achievement Award. The Paul Robeson Institute for Ethics, Leadership, and Social Justice at Raritan Valley Community College honors New Jersey's African-American students who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement and distinguished accomplishments in the area of community service, athletics, the arts, or all three in the tradition of New Jersey native Paul Robeson. Congratulations to Alakim Akalats, Taylor Daniels, George Dupard, Daniel Hall, Miles Jackson, Amaya Muhammad, Timmy Olakoya, Gianna Seeley, Summer Smith, and Addison Whitney. Also at the middle school, our middle school students are rocking it these last couple of months. With the Odyssey of the Mind, Dr. Trabowski shared that the middle school Odyssey of the Mind Team Number Three recently placed at the state competition in Princeton on April 9th and have advanced to represent New Jersey at the International Odyssey of the Mind Competition in Iowa this month. The students will compete by presenting a creative, music-based skit about a historical figure and event. Congratulations to Kavya Nemelakanti, Shreya Nemelakanti, Samuthka Anath, Rashika Subramanian, and Annika Aurora. Good luck to the team and their coach, Ms. Brittany Hamilton. Mr. Chris Ireland, Super Fine Arts, recently shared that all three of our choir students who auditioned for the New Jersey All-State Chorus were selected. Congratulations to Gabriella Albanese, who placed in the top percentile for her voice part, placing her in the mixed ensemble. Eliana Bice and Vanya Medina will represent the high school choir in the treble ensemble. This is an exciting opportunity for the students. They will perform in Atlantic City in November and February. Also in theater, two of our high school theater students have been appointed to the New Jersey State Thesbian Board. Sam Soibell has been appointed to serve as an officer, one of only 13 students statewide serving such a role. Sam will serve as a liaison to the International Thesbian Society and fundraise for theater scholarships, grants, and theater initiatives like Broadway Cares, Equity Fights for AIDS. Dani Biandi has been appointed to serve as a Thesbian Festival Organizer, one of only seven students statewide to receive this designation. Dani will work to plan and develop events and festivals that celebrate theater throughout Congratulations to Hillsborough High School staff and advisor English teacher Michelle Barkin, who were honored by the Garden State Scholastic Press Association for their 2021 Yearbook during the virtual fall conference in November 2021. The staff earned a rating of All-New Jersey Diamond for the Full Color Student Design 2021 Yearbook, one of only three books securing a Diamond rating from the Garden State Scholastic Press Association. Ramrod's achievement is the first time in the program's history that the yearbook has earned top honors in the state. Ramrod was also honored as a gold medalist at the Columbia Scholastic Press Association's Spring Convention and Awards Assembly held virtually on March 18, 2022. Congratulations to school social studies teacher Bob Fenster, who was selected as one of only five teachers to be inducted into the National Teachers Hall of Fame this year. Mr. Fenster will become a member of the Class of 2022 30th Induction Class. Thank you for all you do for your students, and congratulations on this wonderful accomplishment. I would like to give a shout-out to all of our students and staff. As I shared, Hillsborough High School was named in the Top 100 High Schools in New Jersey by U.S. News &amp; World Report. Our ranking this year is 71 out of 100, up from a ranking of 98 out of 100 last year. If you haven't had a chance, please plan on visiting the 2022 District Art Show in the Township Municipal Complex. The exhibit will run through May 27th and highlights the amazing artwork of our elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school students. And we are seeing an uptick in COVID-19 positive cases in Hillsborough and across the county. The Somerset County Superintendent's were texting about the increase in the number of cases, and the local Department of Health reached out regarding the numbers in some of our classrooms, as well as the NJ DOE released a broadcast today reminding school districts that when the COVID-19 level of community transmission is high or orange, the NJ DOE strongly encourages school districts to consider universal masking for all students and staff. While we are in the moderate level of community transmission, which is yellow, if multiple positive COVID-19 cases are identified in the same classroom, we will be advising parents that they may want to have their children wear masks in school. As per my March school messenger regarding the lifting of the mask mandate, masks will be required to be worn during periods of elevated community transmission, meaning when COVID-19 activity level or the CALI Index is high, which is orange, or very high, which is red, or during an active outbreak, when we will consult with our local health department as to whether or not short-term universal masking or masking in the affected classrooms should be required to control the outbreak or the increase in cases. I'm asking that we all remain vigilant in screening for COVID-like symptoms and to stay home if sick to prevent transmission or an outbreak in schools, and they need to return to universal masking. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, Dr. Feltry. All right, we will open up comments from the Board/Public. Public input on the action agenda. I'll read the following. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment. Where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school board, school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address and the agenda item that you're speaking of for the first session. There'll be a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. This is where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy. The board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Does anyone have any public comments on the action agenda?
Hi, good evening. Stefania Lockwoods, Millstone River Road. I'm addressing the report that Ms. Medley just did, 8.1. Is that an appropriate time?
It's not on the action agenda, but sure, you can go ahead.
So the last time Ms. Medley did one of these...
...I can tell the administration, and it stated that specifically set before, superintendent of education stores for outside service providers, especially bus drivers, who are lower than the average, but contractors don't provide sufficient HIV training. I know it's been a while, but I remember Neil's bus had an issue at the start of the year and made a replacement. Well, that should have been one driver change. In fact, there's been so many driver changes, the bus at ARRIS is known as...
...bus that nobody wants to drive. I'm sorry, has that been off this whole time?
We heard you well.
Okay, but did the record?
Were you getting it?
Okay, I'm gonna start over, Ms. Marini, please.
Sure.
Hi, Stefania Lockwoods, Millstone River Road. The last time Ms. Medley was here, it was January 28th or so, she specifically noted to the board, and Dr. Feltry, this is part of the report that she did tonight, same report, that our district scores for outside service providers, such as bus drivers, were lower than they could be because our contractors don't provide sufficient HIV training. I know it's been a while, but I remember Neil's bus had an issue at the start of the year that may have resulted in a driver change. There's more than one driver change. No one at first student wants to drive this bus. No one. This is the bus that shows up late. This is the bus that has had Mr. Jensen and Mrs. Batista on it multiple times. And this is the bus that on Friday of last week, a substitute driver accused my child, who exists, I promise you, of using a racial slur on a bus that was already supposed to be recorded at the request of the ARRIS administration. Would you know that this substitute bus driver got a bus that the camera wasn't working? And today, Ms. Medley is here again presenting another presentation about our HIV reports and scores, et cetera. And I guarantee you that if we were to go ahead and look at that same report for the bus drivers and outside contractors, we would find that there has been zero change. And I fully expect that the board will make sure that the contracts are negotiated with all providers, including those who may have particularly close relationships and make decisions that don't reflect well on the board, such as Mr. Valcheck, if you recall having met in the first place, the football team little parade thing. Please make sure that all vendors are aware of this. And the final HIV investigation request for my child will be filed tomorrow, and I cannot believe that I am sitting here having to tell you this when you have someone who I know personally is really darn good at her job and has been telling you it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
This is for your 12.10, which is Bylaw 0143, about board member election and appointment. I had sent him some emails before, and I'm imagining that when you did revise the wording for this, you also consulted with the lawyer, but I just wanted to point out, and I believe the intent is to have all of the talks and discussions regarding the new board members be more in public and so that things could not be really done behind doors during executive session. So I just wanted to point out that based on the exact wording of it, it's in considering candidates who have expressed interest in vacancy, the Board of Education may, not shall, but may, interview candidates in public or give them the opportunity to speak publicly about the candidacy. So technically, you may do that, but you don't have to do either one. So I just hope that in the future, if you do adopt this particular wording, that you will do one or both of those. Also, tonight, I believe I heard that you wanted to hear from the public before you voted on some of these items. In this bylaw, I cannot believe it allows for the public to make comments after the board members have spoken. And I understand that people might go on for a bit, but if you cap it at 30 minutes or so, it might be nice to give the public a chance to reflect on what they just heard because most likely, it sounds as though it's great that you're gonna be listing the names now, but because that never happened in the recent past, but unless you post their information or a patch article does a quick thing about them, the board, the people don't know much about these people unless they know them personally already. And so after hearing, we had 10 out of 12, I believe, speak at the last open period, it might be nice to hear from the public to see what they have to say, even though there is very few people come to these meetings, and the board may or may not be swayed because I know that you get the information ahead of time, it's just something to consider. And thank you so much for your time. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment on the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will move to the acting superintendent's agenda.
So the acting superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 10.1 through 10.6. Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. Motion to approve fiction and nonfiction books. Motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying HIV determination for the attached cases. Motion to approve submission of the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group's safety grant application. Motion to approve submission and acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Homeless Two Grant. And motion to approve affiliation agreement with Stockton University.
Can I get a motion in a second? So moved. Any discussion by the board? Ms. Jackson?
Yeah. The motion to approve fiction and nonfiction books, I just want to circle back on the knife of never letting go. Are we still going to discuss the disclaimer?
I believe the disclaimer is up to administrative, that's up to administrative and the teachers to do that, but I don't think we have the ability to enforce as a policy disclaimers, but we've never done disclaimers for books that have things of that nature previously,
Yeah, I mean, it's come to the board for approval, so it'd be an option to vote separately on that item if you don't want to approve it. If you want, I can pull out 10.2 for voting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there information about why there's a disclaimer?
So we discussed in the Education Committee that there was some incidents of graphic violence within that book. The book had a disclaimer on its review, so we discussed in Education while we feel that the recommendation was still there, that a teacher should just use some sensitivity to make sure that a student is able to handle that, right? So just a little, and that was the recommendation that was made by many of the reviews in there. So in the Education Committee, I think, not unanimous, but we had agreed that it was an appropriate book, but that disclaimer should, you know, just be taken to heart.
All right, so we will, any other comments on the action agenda? Sure, go ahead.
Just the Stockton University, what is, this is a general agreement?
Yes.
Can you just explain what types of studies we engage in with Stockton?
Say again, I'm sorry.
What types of studies we engage in with Stockton?
I believe that this agreement, Jay, you were the one who saw it, but isn't this an agreement for student teaching and whatnot?
Yes, I believe that is what it's for.
Yes. So it's not research studies or anything like that?
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we'll take, roll on 10.1, 10.3, 10.4, 10.5, and 10.6, and we'll remove 10.2 for the first vote.
Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Veter?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Lu?
Yes.
Mr. Hayo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini. Yes, motion passes. Now for 10.2.
Mr. Gillett?
Do we need a separate motion? I don't think we need a separate motion. Separate motion for 10.2.
Okay, so we'll take a motion in a second for 10.2.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussions specifically on 10.2 before we move to vote? I know we had some.
So I just want to understand Ms. Jackson's, so this book, you read some reviews?
I read the book.
I read the book. No, I was wrong, I was wrong. But the reviews, some reviews stated, I understand the disclaimer part.
I read the reviews on it, and there was reference to the violence that Mr. Oliver had mentioned, and I subsequently read the book after the education meeting, and so I still have objection to the content.
Did someone, did you, did someone provide like a warning label for this book?
No.
Is that what we're saying? So, and you didn't... So, so, and you didn't, John, in education, you didn't, you didn't come up with your, you didn't, you didn't write out your own warning for it?
No, no. So, so, you know, we, we obviously researched the books that were before it. There was, it is the only, it is the only fiction book that's on the summer reading agenda. The reviews on it were that there is graphic violence in the book, but it, it's used to tell the story, although some of the reviews said the violence was a little too graphic, and it just had, you know, the recommendation that if it was a sensitive student, teachers should use caution in allowing them to pick that book. So, you know, I, I kind of followed suit with that, and I think it's an appropriate book, but I think if teachers just use some caution, and they see a student that may be sensitive to that type, encourages them to pick another book.
So this is an optional, optional rating?
It's the summary, so we could put the disclaimer on the website under the summary that this is, you know.
So it goes with a list?
Yeah, it's, right, it's the summary. This is the March Madness where the students at the high school pick the books that they want to read, so.
Mr. Gillette? So, so if we had like just a commitment from administration to put, you know, contain graphic violence or something, whatever, or however you want to do it on there, I think, I don't have a problem voting, you know, yes for it. It's nine to 12, so that, you know, that doesn't bother me so much, but, you know, I don't know if, look, seriously, our only way to prevent that is just to put a no on the book, but I don't think we need to put no on the book. So I'm moving.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
I just wanted to clarify, all of the books through the March Madness came at the suggestion of both students and teachers, correct? So media specialists. So all of the books were recommended, not just by students, but also by our staff. And, and the reviews on the book outside of that were all strongly, you know, that it is a very well-written book and provides many opportunities for discussion. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lanning-Beater. Any other comments before we move to roll?
So is there a commitment for a disclaimer then?
Yeah, we could put that on the website. I thought that was what we had agreed to during a transition.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Kidd? Yeah? Okay, all right. All right, so we will move to roll. Thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trujillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes, motion passes.
The acting superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows, 11.1 through 11.15. Motion to approve resolution. Motion to approve retirements and resignations. Motion to approve contract change. Motion to approve revised leaves of absence. Motion to approve leaves of absence. Motion to approve mentor for 2021, 2022. Motion to approve appointments 2021, 2022. Motion to approve appointments 2022, 2023. Motion to approve transfer change in assignment 2022, 2023. Motion to approve renewal of non-tenured, certificated staff 2022, 2023. Motion to approve renewal of non-tenured HPSA staff 2022, 2023. Motion to approve the renewal of non-tenured, unaffiliated administrators 2022, 2023. Motion to approve summer athletic camp coaches for 2022. Motion to approve sixth and seventh period coverage, and motion to approve extra coverage.
Can I get a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion by the board on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Truhayo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes, motion passes.
The acting superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operation agenda as follows, 12.1 through 12.11. Motion to approve monthly financials. Motion to approve line item transfers. Motion to approve financial status. Motion to approve Sedexo Food Services Management Contract Renewal for 2022, 2023 school year. Motion to approve 2022, 2023 cafeteria lunch prices. Motion to approve proposal for replacement of upper weight room gym floor due to water damage. Motion to approve the sale disposal of obsolete athletic equipment. Motion to approve out-of-district placement. Motion to approve resolution to ratify the agreement between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Education Association, July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2025. And motion to accept donations.
Oh, what did I miss?
Motion to approve bylaw for second reading. Apologize for that. Bottom of the page.
All right, can I get a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion by the board? Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, so I'd like to talk about the bylaw just for a second. So the bylaw, when we had the recent opening, we, for the board, and we went to the bylaw to guide us in selecting a person to fill that vacancy, we recognized that the bylaw was deficient in a few ways. We wanted to just tighten up, make sure that it followed our practice, but also followed law. And there's some things that you're prohibited from doing by law. I don't think, we're prohibited from interviewing candidates in closed session in private, so we wanted to make sure that that was in there, that if we were going to interview them, it would all be in public. We wanted to make sure that that was in there. But there's another interesting aspect of this, and Ms. Gabor-Belis mentioned this when she was at the podium a while ago. Public comments on candidates, and it was, it was my belief anyway, or maybe it's only my personal belief, that the reason we deliberate about candidates in executive session in private is the same reason why we are disinclined to permit public comment on candidates in public. It's because they're not public people yet. And I don't, I, I think it would, it'd make it very uncomfortable for, for candidates to be spoken about by a bunch of people in public, and, you know, and possibly have their flaws pointed out, or wherever it might be. I mean, we deliberate about the candidates in executive session for a reason, and I think that reason is consistent with not, not having public comment on the candidates. You know, conversely, I mean, you may have a candidate have ten of their friends line up quickly and give campaign speeches for them for the whole 30 minutes, we allotted 30 minutes. We might have that also on the, on the other side of it. That was my reasoning behind, behind doing it this way. I don't think, we could ask Mr. Fogarty, but I don't, I don't think we're prohibited from allowing public comment on prospective candidates before we vote on them. I don't think that's prohibited, right?
Mr. Gillette, it's not prohibited. The, the first distinction that you made is accurate, which is that the interviews of the candidates should take place in public so that the public has an opportunity to hear their responses to the questions that the board members may be asking and the presentations that they're making. The deliberations are done in executive session, similar to deliberations with regard to any other personnel matters, in order to protect their privacy rights. Beyond that, it's within the board's discretion as to whether or not you're going to allow public participation with regard to the selection process.
All right. So I, just so you'll understand, I think that was the reasoning of everything of operations committee when we went through it. I think that it just mirrors what we do. We, we, look, so I'm, I'm okay with it like this. Perhaps we could revisit it if we, if we feel differently in the future, but I'm good with it like it, like it stands now.
And I'll just add, I responded to Ms. Gabor-Belis in the email with that same point. We did seriously consider this debate changes for a good 15, 20 minutes on which way we're going to go with the wording, and very specific on that point for the points that Mr. Gillette pointed out. Fifteen years of experience is serving you well, Mr. Gillette. All right, so is there any other comments from the board? No?
I was just going to ask, are you planning to share with the public the, the HIA negotiations information, or will that be after?
That would.
As a summary?
Yeah, I think that'll be a summary.
Are you, are you, are you asking about the terms of the HIA agreement?
That's correct. I mean, I know the board understands what that is, but for the public.
Mr. President, do you want me to review that?
Please do.
So the board and the Hillsborough Education Association have reached an agreement, a three-year agreement, which as the acting superintendent indicated, will be effective July 1, 2022, and will continue through June 30 of 2025. There will be an increase in the salaries inclusive of increment and longevity. Increment is the movement on the salary guide, and longevity is the amount of money that individuals are paid based on their length of service in the school district and in each of the three years of the successor agreement. The total, the total percentage will be 3%, which will include all of those components. In addition to the salary guides in the contract, there is also, there are also salary guides for extracurricular and athletics. There will be no increase in year one. There will be an increase in, in year two of 3%, and there will be no increase in year three, that, that amount will remain the same. There was the incorporation of a sidebar agreement with regard to six-period assignments, and there were another, a number of other changes that were not substantive, but were really stylistic in terms of changing pronouns, correcting titles to specific positions, and correcting the designation to the elementary, middle, and, and high schools, and the intermediate school. And beyond that, all of the other terms of the contract shall remain the same. The salary guides were approved by New Jersey School Boards. Determination was made that the, by that analysis, that the salary guides maintain a very good structure and place both the, the board and the association in a good position when they negotiate their next contract three years from now.
All right, a very simple process, especially as compared to the last time we went through this, so very pleased we were able to do this quickly and painlessly. All right, we will move to roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Mr. Hayo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we will now move on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome the group of the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open to public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaw 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums do not structure as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Please note through the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein, do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Please join us.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Eldridge Howard, 75 Weber Avenue. I'm speaking tonight because I must respond to comments made at the last meeting by a Hillsborough resident who I was hoping she'd be here tonight. First, having been an educator at all levels for most of my life, I know one thing to be true. Never politicize teaching and learning. There are too many people not aware of curriculum guidelines and state requirements, especially when it comes to the teaching of history and social studies, commonly known as DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. New Jersey school districts are moving to recognize the integral part of African Americans that African Americans have played in every turn in this nation's history. The Amistad Bill, A1301, which became law in 2002, calls on the New Jersey schools to incorporate African, African-American history into their social studies curriculum. However, a recently approved state law requires each school district in New Jersey to incorporate instruction on diversity and inclusion into an appropriate place in the curriculum for kindergarten degrees 12 for students starting in the 2021, 2022 school year. The board approves sanctions, a curriculum outlined by the Department of Education. Now, this legislation also created the Amistad Commission, a 23-member body charged with ensuring that African-American history, contributions, and experiences are adequately taught in the state's classrooms. No, 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 it's not CRT. It is the real story of our country's history. Sadly, I didn't begin to learn about our country's history until I was in college, and maybe we don't all see diversity in some neighborhoods and schools. However, once the students attend middle school, high school, and college, or whatever position or job they choose, this is the real world that the children and young adults will live in. For example, I was always told that Columbus discovered America, and I quote, it would be more accurate perhaps to say that he introduced the Americans to Western Europe during the four wages to the region between 1492 and 1502. It's also safe to say that he paved the way for the massive influx of Western Europeans that would ultimately form several new nations, including the United States, Canada, and Mexico. How can we discover a place when Native Americans and Asians and other people were already here when his men arrived? I won't go any further over this conversation at this time, but last week's comment shook me. I don't, I don't know if you were looking, but I was at the end of my seat, and it upset me.
Thank you.
So tonight, I think to be unconcerned, and I love, I'm educated, I'm a true educator. And when I heard it, I, I just had to say something tonight. Hillsborough is not the only town.
Thank you. We're way over the time limit.
Can I, can I give a few more, I only have a few more things to say.
Go ahead, finish your sentence.
Thank you. Hillsborough is not the only town. Districts are engaging in this process throughout the state, and it's time for all of us to face reality and get to know each other. You may find that we have more in common than you think. Thank you.
Thank you.
June 21, 11 HR Court, just want to extend my congratulations to Mr. Gillette for his 15 years on the Board of Education, which is equivalent to 105 years in dog years. So do with that what you want. But I appreciate all the help he gave me while I was on the board, especially when I was on operations, his depth of knowledge and information, and, you know, he really was sincerely invested in being informed about everything that had to do with operations and finances, and was pretty patient in explaining things to me. So thank you for your service for our students and our, our district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I know that the action agenda has passed, but I just do want to speak to an item that was on there. There's, under the retirements and resignations, there's a number of losses to this district, significant ones both programmatically and those that are just to the core of who this district is, some of which are for reasons that are happy ones, and some of which are for reasons that are not. And for those second ones, I hope that the board will truly consider some of those reasons or at least seek to understand them better, and determine why some people who would or at least seek to understand them better and determine why some people who would not previously have left, left. But on a far happier note, I want to recognize James Cox, also known as Mr. Jim, who has been with the district since 1988. He has been an integral part of the Hillsborough Education Association, pretty much his entire time here, serving as an officer, our head custodial rep, and pretty much always on our negotiations team. Much of the rights that our members enjoy have been protected or obtained through the work of Mr. Cox. And as you can see from his service, he has absolutely just been a cornerstone of our schools, and he will be very difficult to replace. He will be sorely missed, I think both within the schools and by our association. But I do say I wish him all the very best, even though I did try to change the year of his retirement to 2045, and he caught me on that. But Mr. Cox has been an absolute amazing, amazing person within our buildings, within our schools, and even to me as a president of the association, I've learned greatly from him. So I would just like to publicly recognize his service and thank him for that. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Tiffany Neal, and I'm at 6 Cedar Hill Terrace. Thank you to the board for your committee work to explore healthy school hours for Hillsborough students. As you know, extensive research shows that starting both middle and high school at 8:30 a.m. or later improves mental health, physical health, and academic achievement among teenagers. By starting Hillsborough High School too early, we are currently preventing teens from getting the eight to 10 hours of sleep they need to be healthy, happy, and successful. In case you want a visual on why we need healthy school hours, check out the Instagram borough.sleeping that I came across recently. It shows photos of Hillsborough students asleep in school. The account had 148 posts just between November and January. As Mr. Marini said at a recent board meeting, we need to start planning now to be able to start healthy school hours by the fall of 2023. The BLE and administration should be working on all angles of this important issue, including scheduling, transportation, and communication with families. I know that change is tough, and later start times will be hard for some families. Please remember that current start times are hard for other families. There are such a variety of parent work schedules and family responsibilities that we will not be able to satisfy everyone with any schedule, including the status quo. Therefore, we should let student wellness and academics be our guide and move to healthy school hours for our kids. As a reminder, every year that we fail to act is hurting Hillsborough students. Thank you for your attention to this issue, and I look forward to hearing updates about your progress in the coming weeks.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Anna Chung, and I live on 5 Tuttle Court. I am a parent of a second grader who is in the REACH program. During the April 25 board meeting, I watched on YouTube, the board shared that the delivery of REACH program will be changed next year due to the budget cut. In that meeting, it was mentioned that there will be a parent meeting for all the REACH parents or all the parents, with some kids might not be identified, will be interested in that information as well. And as of yet, I've not heard the date and time, so I was wondering if that has been established, and if so, if you could kindly address that and post it on the district website or have it emailed to all the parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We haven't actually set the meeting date, so as soon as we do, we will publicize it.
Yep.
Good evening, Bob Williams, 101 Everett Court, Chris. I stand before you tonight as a student of history and a social observer of the times who, as a minister, is obligated under the highest authority to tell the truth. In thinking about the purpose of this group of men and women as the Board of Education, I believe that despite any other differences that we may have, that the one thing that we should all be in agreement on is that education itself is defined as acquiring knowledge and information for the purposes of eliminating ignorance and stupidity, because they both ideally represent an impediment to living a fruitful life as a contributing member of society. So we should be alarmed when ignorance and stupidity attempt to define education as in what our children are being taught. And there's much ignorance and stupidity in the opposition to CRT, critical race theory. It's time to move away from those composing and selling the false narrative. So here goes. I'm guessing that some in this room tonight, including some of you board members, may be supporters of the 45th occupant of the White House, and to that end, you're familiar with MAGA, Make America Great Again. So as an African American, I would pose just one question to the Board of Education. When was America ever great for the African-American community of citizens? No need for me to wait for the obvious answer, that as African Americans, there's never been a time in this country that Americas were great for us collectively. Not enslavement or the Middle Passage, not Reconstruction or the Black Codes, not Gen Core or redlining, not the war on drugs, the prison industrial complex, gentrification or gerrymandering. And that covers the 403 years' history of Black people in this country. So the bottom line question posed by Derek Bell, the author of Critical Race Studies, known as CRT, which is absolutely not being taught in any grade school and very few colleges in this country, was to try to answer the following question. What is the impact and effect of 403 years of not greatness for people? How has 403 years of not greatness resulted in the disparities in life expectancy, health outcomes, education, employment, and wealth attainment, especially when the old racist tropes like we're lazy, unintelligent, more violent, more sexual have been thoroughly invalidated by science and research? Like when the FBI says that we African-Americans, who represent 14% of the population and who do not commit crimes at any rate, greater rate than any other ethnic group, and in many cases fewer, as in mass murder, why are we prosecuted more often in jails at eight to 10 times the rate of whites for the same crimes? And why are we nearly half of those incarcerated and we're only 14% of the population? Again, CRT not being taught but seeks to answer the question. If we acknowledge the systemic structural racism of the enslavers who founded this country and wrote the Constitution, and then corrected for the inclusion of blacks and other underrepresented groups, including white women, how will that impact, affect, and improve the overall condition of this nation economically, environmentally, scientifically, and culturally? How much will the nation benefit from such honesty?
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Hello again, Alicia Gabe Bayless. Thank you for your comments on the bylaw 0143. I understand your concerns about public's comment. That was not my first concern, but I heard it from the public, and the public is not always here to express their thoughts, so that's why I wanted to add that. My concern mostly is that in the worst case, the board could decide to not have a public interview, to not have the opportunity to speak, and to not have the existing board members express their opinion in support of their candidate. I don't believe that is the intent of this board, but I just wanted to point out that is a possibility, and that is the board's decision if they wish to do that. Also, I echo the REACH parent night, so thank you for keeping us informed on that. That's it, thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Stefania Gabriella Lockwoods, 1229 Millstone River Road. Before my other comments, I think some of you have already read this, but I'd like to read it clearly. I owe Mr. Gillette an apology. After careful-- Whoops, this is wrong. After careful public discussion with a couple of pretty smart people who know him, I've recognized that I have been unfairly criticizing him as a partisan without evidence. While I may have correctly inferred Mr. Gillette's political positions, and he may have stated publicly who he has voted for in the past, I incorrectly assumed that he has stated his party affiliation on the record in a manner inconsistent with the nonpartisan requirements of a school board. I was wrong. I have found no evidence of Mr. Gillette acting in a directly partisan manner in his business on the board. While we disagree on pretty much everything, he is absolutely right. He knows and plays up by the rules. I'm aware of the impact on my credibility from this mistake. I accept the consequences, including whatever criticism you may have already had forthcoming. I pride myself on sticking to the record, and I am embarrassed and disappointed in myself that I got it wrong this time. Finally, I owe you a personal apology, Greg. Following the last meeting that I attended, I took out on you my frustration with Mr. Oliver's refusal to speak with me. You were blindsided and attacked over a conversation that you didn't even know was happening. That was wrong, it was unfair, and I'm sorry. That said, I'm not the one who made this political. Hillsborough Patch, 2019. John Oliver, a Republican, is a lifelong resident of Somerset County and a resident of Hillsborough since 1983, and Paul Marini, a Democrat, is a resident of Hillsborough since 2010. No one forced either of you to make your political affiliation integral to your campaign. Mr. Marini, my criticism of you is that you ran as a Democrat with Mr. Oliver as an attempt to establish an appearance of bipartisanship on the school board. However, the NJSBA views school boards as nonpartisan, which is something very different. However, Mr. Oliver, my criticisms of you is directly over your choice to be publicly affiliated with a party that is on the record as attacking this very institution. As I told the board this week, several weeks ago at this point, Tucker Carlson literally encouraged men to thrash teachers. Bill Spadia has called the NJEA child abusers, and it was only a Republican. Hillsborough's own Jack Chittorelli, amplified by the NJGOP, encouraging Republicans to school boards with political aims. Quote, "Parents, it's time to attend Board of Education meeting, asking your local representatives to tell Phil Murphy no to age inappropriate subject matter." And what is that subject matter? That I exist. That a person born with a penis could in fact be a girl. That teaching kids about things, teaching kids things about themselves that they are already experiencing is somehow age inappropriate. There's nothing gross or sexual about teaching kids that sometimes the plumbing doesn't match their brains and hearts. It just is. I was seven when I tried to tell my dad, and neither one of us knew what I meant. This education fixes that and graciously reduces the chance of transgender kids suffering and dying. I tried very hard not to show only, only show up with problems. I'd be happy to read the statement that I prepared and shared with the board now, but it would mean a lot more to the people in our community coming from our school leadership.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will open it up to the board for any comments.
I just have an announcement, which is kind of awkward coming after. Okay, so I just wanted to announce to the public that the Harlem Wizards will be at the Hillsborough High School again on Saturday, May 21, to take on the Arshah All-Stars, and it's a really fun evening community event. It's the biggest fundraiser of the year for Arshah, and information on buying tickets is in the Hillsborough Happenings email. And actually, if you're in person tonight at the board meeting, there is a flyer at the table, and you can scan that for tickets. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will move to adjourn the meeting. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.